Pardon, speaking in order, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jamie Kendall.
Present.
Darcy McSwain.
Present.
Paul Jenderzki.
Here.
Edgar Tidoff.
Present.
Michael Nesbit.
Present.
Kathy Harris.
Present.
Troy Freed.
Present.
Any adjustments to the agenda? Get a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any announcements, public comment? Spicer engineer report.
Mitchells in Georgia and Mark is at a planning commission meeting. Planning commission, we continue on the code rewrite, then the first six chapters, which just still tedious cleanup things. Nothing too controversial just yet. We submitted our category B for walnut in Maple Street yesterday. We have a meeting tomorrow on Safe Routes with Adam Jenks from Safe Routes, Michigan, going over the Ithaca Road. Priority three, so priority, it's good that they keep asking questions because I think it means they're considering us for the nine hundred thousand, but sometime you kind of get curious. It might get cut, but that meeting is tomorrow at one, one thirty.
So what are we talking about sidewalk all the way out of town or you're talking about the sidewalk to the school?
Sidewalk down, down Spruce and Ithaca and where it would cut over to get to the school.
So you're not going all the way up to the?
No.
Not down, they, they cut that out, but it'll still get it to almost the curve. So now we're trying to figure out how to serve the apartments there and, and what right of way are necessary, whether it's a water right of way or?
Well, I think that's what everybody wanted in the first place, just so the kids.
Yep.
Whoever could get to the apartments into the school without walking on the road, so I don't think it was necessary to go up to the village limit.
No, that was an easy straight shot to bulldog drive. So this, just the funding didn't come in that way. I think we got it down to one point one three million and the fund and the grant is for nine hundred thousand, so we can be on the hook for the rest. That's why we're going after the category B to cover that two hundred and fifty thousand for the roadside, but.
Category B, what is, what does that come out of it?
State grant.
Yeah.
And then the fifty percent match, we normally use the, the local village street fund. But this year we could receive double that if the county passes their road mailing, so something to consider. So that's kind of what we're working on phase one, obviously it's coming to an end, they started painting roads, people started driving through them. Even though there was cones and buckets and yellow tape.
Of course.
Um, but coming to a close, uh, we're gonna meet next week and go through the numbers, see where we're at, continue to see why, what more we can do or what we can put back to the county to kind of lower our prices going forward, so we're almost there. And the, uh, application to USD ARD is almost finalized, so we should have that in the next month or two. Again, that's, that would probably be twenty twenty five, hopefully spring. Tear up the roads then and then tear them up again in twenty six.
Hmm.
That'll get. Probably, you say half, half the village will be done then or?
Do it like water again?
Water and roads, maybe close.
There's a really portion of the council, it'll be gone.
Councilman's approval for May eighth, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes of the village council meeting for May eighth, twenty twenty four.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Commission committee reports, item A Downtown Development Authority, June seventh, twenty twenty four.
This veteran memorial banner thing they want to do, what, where do they plan on putting that?
Throughout town. We're trying to look at the contact now.
Looking at small, like small?
Basically the same as that with you can sign up your, apply to have your veteran, their name on their rank.
Oh, really? Oh.
If you go through Frank and Wood's or Bertrand, they have them there off of the city.
Um, Standish has it, Northville, Chesneen.
I think Milton just did it too.
Yes, I wasn't sure if that's how you were doing it or if you're talking.
So we're kind of looking, I think Chesneen we looked at pays like a hundred, hundred fifty bucks a person and they get to keep it afterwards. So you can do twenty every year, uh, if they don't want it back, uh, that seemed kind of pricey, but we're getting a quote right now on what would one individual cost and go from there, but. Have them up from basically Memorial Day to Labor Day or to Veterans Day, I guess.
Oh.
On top of the ones that we, uh, DDA, DDA already purchased.
Your pickleball court's not gonna be over here anymore, you moved it back to?
They're, they're up in the air, they're not ready to give up on pickleball yes, yeah.
That's not, I mean, the park is the park, you wanna play basketball, whatever, baseball, the park, why would the heck would you put it right uptown? That'll make no sense, no sense.
The signs they want to do, are they like at the village limit signs or?
Mm-hmm, and that's kind of for the discussion later. I don't know if Kelly or Victoria, they were gonna come and they want to, obviously you have the overall say on that. And they wanted to throw some ideas, see what you might be willing to, to agree to and, and again, they would be willing to put DDA funds towards it.
The five-year Parks and Recreation Plan, fishing pier, Lumberjack Park, DDA would encourage and develop the business growth, putting fifty percent towards the new pier. How much is that pier?
Thirty-six thousand dollars.
For a pier?
Mm-hmm.
Like really?
All that kayak launch.
Build it was for half that.
It's the same as the kayak launch, but it's a pier.
I think we could have just integrated it all into one, one side being the kayak and the other one about a, a boat launch, it'd be fine, isn't like it's overwhelmed with people piling on top of each other that. As far as like, you guys aren't really seriously thinking about putting a parking lot in the middle of that park down there, are you?
Seriously contemplating, yeah.
You got all that room right along, right along the, what that people don't use now, and then you got the overflow up top, right in front of the haunted house. All you need to do is put some stairs down there. It's a waste of money, because there's no way you're gonna get that many people down there, where you're gonna fill up that and the parking lot and up top, that makes no sense at all, that's a waste of money.
I don't think it's so much hard, you know, to make it more accessible for boat pulling there.
No, it's not, that's what I'm trying to get at, you, you pull in there, you back up, put it in, you pull right forward, all you need to do is where you guys got the big rocks there now, you got the two trees there, just, just move that. Where you got the rocks for now, you don't have it between the trees, all you need to do is move all that, put some, I don't care if it's raro ties or some more rocks in there, and you got all sorts of parking right there. You could park ten, fifteen different vehicles there, plus you got the overflow top, I would not waste the money on that, that would be just, no, no sense at all, no common sense at all. And then you, you're using up the whole park for what? You took out the, the place gate for the kids, so now if people come out here, they go fishing, the kids get nothing to play on. Where you gonna move that up there, put that up there, but then you got nothing down there, so you're gonna put another what, thirty, forty thousand dollars into a park down there?
Park committee made that decision, not us.
Yeah, not us, yeah.
Well, something that approved and that's wrong. That's wrong, you're not using any common sense at all, and that is wrong. We just, just all that money into there, a hundred thousand dollars into that one, huh?
That's why we vote.
Yeah, I'm just saying, use some common sense, I just, I can't even, they even brought that up, and then they took that out of there. People come from Saginaw, they don't have the gangs, they have to come out and get away from that. Mom and dad can fish, kids can play on the playground, but now they don't even have a playground there, so make any sense? No. That told Hart, since you put some picnic tables down there, maybe some permanent grills or something down there, so have a little picnic down there, give the kids something to do. Now they ain't got nothing to do, they got no play equipment down there, now we're gonna spend another thirty, forty thousand dollars on new, new play equipment, no sense. Yeah.
I appreciate DDA actually open up to the purse strings and investing in the town, we're starting to get them to actually invest and spend their money. Instead of kind of holding on, seems like for the last few years, they've been kind of not spending, I appreciate DDA starting to open up the purse strings a little bit for this town.
I do too, yes, I agree totally.
I do too, you know, maybe go to the meetings.
Apparently Dr. Klein agrees too.
What you're?
He did say that.
I'll make a motion, we approve of the Downtown Development Authority report for June seventh, twenty twenty four.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item B Parks and Recreation Committee did not meet in May twenty twenty four.
It will meet next week at Coal Miners Park, five thirty. Uh, there will be a ribbon, ribbon cutting for the T-ball field as part of that partnership.
Looks nice, by the way.
The Fordy Club should be there as well as, uh, OJ's, the American Legion, so all the groups that participated, so if you'd like to join, make your picture taping, five thirty at the park on Wednesday.
Next Wednesday? Item C Planning Commission, May sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May sixteenth, twenty twenty four, the same as planning commission.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Communications Review Magazine. You got anything to discuss on this? Still get mailed to Richard Horner.
Yeah, all of them are still on.
Cause I don't have a lunch at the Bad River. Getting this mail.
Here, says your stack, your script is coming.
Two years' worth, two years' worth, like, sorry Dick, these are all yours.
I'm the chance to catch up.
Payment of claims.
I have a question. On page five. I, this is just a question, the lawn, the lawn maintenance, property care, lawn maintenance dykes.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a separate company or something coming in to take care of the dykes?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, what's the reason for that?
The dykes are put in under federal authorities.
Oh.
So they mow their own dykes, the dykes to ensure that they're being, they're still useful and properly maintained.
Twenty-six hundred dollars, huh?
Mm-hmm. One, I believe it's just once a year, right?
The, the payments once a year.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, throughout the summer, until November. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's one thing.
Yeah, they, it's like from the DNR all the way to.
I guess I got a couple of questions, what's with the etna supply, what is three thousand dollars for?
What page are you on?
Huh?
What page are you on?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Three, three of eleven, second line.
Census annual maintenance.
Yeah, what is this, what is census?
So that's the machine we use to read meters, the water meters?
Oh, that was another thing, we were talking when they were reading the meters. Would, you know, in the long run, what takes what, three or four days, a month for them guys to read all the meters?
Quarter.
Every quarter.
Yeah, it's a quarter.
They read quarterly.
Well, oh, I thought it was like every month they had to do a, say, wouldn't it be simpler and more economical to get the, the digital one?
It'd be simpler, but I don't think it's more economical.
So it's.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, what is the cost actually compared, compared to like over ten years, let's say we did it over ten years.
I would probably shoot for twenty, the computer system alone is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the equipment is seven hundred thousand dollars.
How much do we pay these guys a year, how many guys we do to do it, to do it every quarter?
Two guys.
You even budget that out?
Two guys, seventeen bucks.
Well, no, we probably.
Two, three guys?
We probably have forty hours a quarter, so a hundred and sixty hours a, a year times one person a page.
Yeah. I mean, it's a thought, I mean, over the long run, I don't know if you had to update your system all the time.
We're all for it.
Well, I, I know, I'm, I'm just saying, but I mean, I don't wanna take any work away from you, but I'm just saying.
It's costing.
So in wages, it's just like twenty-eight hundred dollars per year. That's at eighteen dollars an hour, which Scott and Tyler are good.
So what are you saying?
It's about twenty-eight hundred dollars for them to do it a year.
So it'd take a lot to recoup that.
Yeah, but eventually that, I would like to get there. Uh, that, part of that, the problem with that is the water fund, then you gotta, you gotta increase water rates to pay for.
And then how would you, how would, how would you update that? Yeah, I mean, people already complain about their water rates going up, by the way.
Yep, yeah, right, so they'd have to probably double easily in the next two years. The cool thing about the equipment, the software is, so every, at midnight, twelve oh one, every night, it would send a Wi, through wifi, through the town to the computer and give a reading. So you could find leaks a lot quicker, people couldn't really argue that this isn't accurate because, well, we got it every single day. Um, you know, then they said, the questions that I asked was what if wifi goes out, what if the internet goes down, what if power goes out?
Would you like, look into that for a few, maybe you'd like to do a little rainy day fun, take a little here, take a little there, cut back on that to, to eventually get to that. To get a little fun going, and maybe ten years down the road, five, ten years down the road, we could actually think about doing that.
Hundred percent.
Well, I, I know these guys don't like digging that, in the middle of the winter and then going around, yeah.
Yeah, they wouldn't have to go out ever again, and they're the ones that are saying like, why don't we just get that system so I don't have to do this?
Municipal.
He, he might be sitting here actually, the guy that complains the most.
He ain't got much to complain about, I mean, he reads them for twenty-eight years.
But at the same time, yeah, it's, it's, we're looking at a million dollars.
Defense fund here, I, I, we'll talk more about it later.
So that's our insurance legal defense, that we are part of a pro, a pool.
Perfect property care, lawn maintenance?
Or, oh, no.
Why do we have somebody mowing lawn for us when we got plenty of guys up there with lawns?
She's just talking about the dykes. Talking about the dykes.
Yeah.
The what?
The dykes, mowing the dykes.
Well, they, we can't do that?
But in the fed, it's federal dykes that were put in after the flood.
So why isn't that coming out of our taxes, why is that being put on our laps? Is that the federal job to do, I mean, why is that coming out of our pockets?
Their dykes.
Don't we already pay our taxes to get that done?
At the federal level, not at the local level, but maybe Paul can.
And then the other thing was the prosecutor, why are we paying a pro, don't we actually pay our taxes to, for the prosecutor, you got prosecutor, prosecutor, prosecutor?
Already when I was, I questioned that as well, and what the answer I got was is because instead of us, when we have charges that are local charges, when we write the speeding ticket, we do it in a local ordinance, so we get more kickback money from it. Or any other charges we do for local ordinance, instead of us paying our attorney fees, which is ninety-some dollars an hour.
More than that.
Whatever it is, the prosecutor does it for us at a cheaper rate, that's just something that he offers. So when we do our charges, he, he goes forward and does the prosecution for us, instead of us paying our attorney fees, which would be much more. It was just something that he offered when he came over here to this, to this town.
Cost savings.
Well, I just, I don't know, Sheriff Department arraignment, checking the guy's Sheriff Department arraignment service, April twenty-fourth, I mean, it's not a lot, we're just like.
Yeah, I don't get that one either, but that's, that's, again, that's what the, the prosecutor going to do the arraignment, instead of us doing our, yeah, local attorney, which would cost a lot more. Because it's a local charge, the prosecutor, if it's, if the charge was state level, the prosecutor would pick it up, because it's a state level, then the tax dollars would pay for that, but then we wouldn't get any money back to the village for when the fines and fees are coming in, we wouldn't see any of that money back.
So we're getting more money back having the prosecutor do it, I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
I'm saying, cause I know for a fact, our taxes are already paid for the ta, for the prosecutor.
It works out the end of the year more money. No, there's only, they, they can only go for certain charges, there's other charges that we just have to do the state level and then he, they take care of that all, but we just don't get any kickback from it on the fees causing fines on it. So there's only certain ones.
I mean, it sounds right, but just like, you're looking at it out here going, why are we paying that?
But if, you don't see the amount of money that we get back from it, because this goes into general fund, it's not itemized separately, so you can't see what we're actually getting back in the, in the general fund.
Well, I was told too, when I was on the police department, that as far as the sheriff doing the arraignment, we would, we ourselves would have to go in to do the arraignment. And this way the sheriff department does it, he, they bring the prisoner over, they stay with them, they're there.
Yeah, it's cheaper than paying us the overtime to do it.
Well, I just look at the month of January, February, March, hundred eighty-six dollars, seventy-five cents, so for three months, we got the price of one hour with our attorney.
Yeah.
Well, just by looking at it, you don't know that by looking at it, you know, it's, I mean, what the, you, you looking at it and you doing this month after month after month, and you, over the years, that builds up, so it's like.
I just wondered why, why we're just not paying the bills for June, July, August, September, not October.
They all came in once.
That's why we they bill.
Really?
They all came in once, that's why I questioned it when I got them, and I got ahold of Frankie Wood's chief, who's the guy I go to to ask questions about these certain things, and he told me, he said, that's how they do it. They just, they instead of bill you once a month, they bill you like six months at a time.
Okay.
Cause I went back to flew there and asked her, I said, do we pay these? I wanted to make sure we didn't pay these, because it was six, all these months, and she looked up, she goes, no, that's how it's been doing it, but it just, they all come in once, so.
I don't remember seeing them on, on a sheet like this before.
I don't know if I have either, but it's, we don't get them all that often, because again, it's only when we do the local charges. So if you don't have anything local charge wise, it's all state level, then we don't do it.
Go for it, Jerry.
I'll make a motion to approve payment of claims amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and ninety-six cents.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Before we move on, you wanna let Paul speak? Do you wanna go, you wanna, wanna say?
I, I, thank you very much.
You come for time?
I, I, this was my last stop, so I, I'm, I'll wait to the end, but thank you very much.
Okay. You're welcome.
Okay.
New business, item A Police Academy tuition.
I just threw in the email, the costs, uh, this is refundable through the state grant that is, I don't think they're funding in the future, uh, so.
It's getting low.
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna send a new recruit, uh, as soon as possible, the paperwork should be in probably tomorrow.
She sent some of it in today, and I had sent an email to Dawn here to make sure, to ask her what else we need to do to finalize it. Not, doesn't need to be finalized till July, but I wanted to get it done before then, so it's all taken care of. But this is to send, um, somebody that we have looked at hiring into the academy in the fall. And again, it worked with last time where, well, they sent us a bill, then we, we pay it, but we get reimbursed by the state through the whole re, uh, reimbursement act that we get.
Wouldn't the last guy have to pay some of that back, or do you?
We couldn't charge him for the tuition, because we didn't end up paying it ourselves, it was the state, we, or we got reimbursed for it, so we couldn't charge him for any of that.
Hope we get a good one.
The person that we're hiring has been working in, with Frank and Muth for?
She's a reservist Frank and Wood, she was a high school student when I was in Millington, she did ride alongs with us when I was working there. Um, so it's, it's not just somebody that we don't know out of the blue, I know, I know her.
But she's got some experience in our community.
She's getting some experience in Frank and Wood, um, the guy that she's riding with in Frank and Wood, I used to work with him, he's got thirty years' experience. He's called me up and asked me what kind of programs we run, so it's the same thing, so he's training around all the programs we have. So it's not like she's gonna come in blind like before, it'd be, you know.
Lot of career changes is something she's passionate about, put the time in.
Yeah. Yeah, she's also going to get, she's also doing online schooling at the same time to get her masters in, forget what it was though, remember what it was?
Pardon?
What her masters was?
I'm wrong.
Forget what it was.
Uh, neuropsychology, so psychology, yep.
That's a good one.
Criminal justice minor.
Alright. Do we need a motion, please?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that we pay the tuition fees of nine thousand thirty-four dollars plus the two hundred and fifty application fee to, for the recruit for the academy.
Support.
Roll call vote.
Jamie Kendall.
Yes.
Darcy McSwain.
Yes.
Paul Jenderzki.
Yeah.
Edgar Tidoff.
Yes.
Michael Nesbit.
Yes.
Kathy Harris.
Yes.
And Troy Freed.
Yeah.
Now, is this the last one you'll be sending through for a while?
Hopefully. I, I was hoping the last one was, but. Um, but this is the way it works out sometimes, you know, so. I would hope so.
Item B Set Farmers Marketplace Hours and Months.
That time.
I was like, damn, felt like we just did that. Been a year already, shit, Lord.
Mm-hmm.
Was there, was there any issues with the, uh, hours and time?
I feel like they cut off an hour near the end, three to six, instead of three to seven, right after we, we approved the new farmer's marketplace sign, it's at three to seven, and put it out.
Okay.
You know? But, um, they, they tried doing a few weekends, you know, to see if that drums up more business, um, they've tried going a little bit earlier, two to six as well, um. It's your, it's your world.
What were they last year?
Three to seven, Tuesday. It's that time though.
Yep.
You know when I called you a couple of weeks ago, when I was getting a phone call about the garage sale thing?
Yeah.
We, this is just a thought.
So, so I know that's an annual thing, so it's gonna be every year.
Well, that's what I'm just trying to get at, we could actually make maybe a couple bucks off it, open up spots up there and have like an annual rummage sale up there, you know, like a, like you do for the farmer's market or whatever, I mean, you ain't making nothing off the way they're doing it.
Right.
I mean, then I'm getting calls where they got a, whatever taco trucks and whatever cruising around everywhere, like what the hell?
The parks, when he's actually putting one on in August, that's supposed to kind of rile that and all the funds generated from that will come back to the park.
Just, just get it out of their system and have their big rummage sale, have it right there, or maybe have a, one weekend deal out of the year where we have a annual rummage sale here, so, yeah, I don't know.
It's gone back and forth both ways, they did that here for a while, and then it became chaos like Freeland and they got rid of it, and now it's bad.
Well, Freeland seems to make a lot of money off that, but it's the tying in with the wall, I felt, so.
Correct.
Just saying, we could do something like that.
So farmer's market, the hours, so we.
Last year.
What is it right now?
Six to six o'clock, seems.
Two to six.
Two to six.
I mean, I just don't get out of work till five.
That's what I was, that's what it was.
Yeah, it's on Tuesday, isn't it, or when?
Right, it's Tuesday.
Like he says, no, nobody gets out of work till two, three, four o'clock, I mean, so you might wanna let it go for, I mean, it doesn't even get dark till nine-ish, so.
Our manager said that he, she didn't have any complaints or anything with the hours cut down.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's up to the people up there, are they gonna willing to sit up there, you know, you don't have to stay up there that long, do they?
They, they always leave early.
That's what I'm saying, so, they wanna leave, no good, just go.
Three to, three to seven, no.
I'll make a motion to keep the hours the same as last year, three to seven, it's on Tuesdays.
Four.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item C Set the Old Fashioned Christmas Date.
While we're setting dates and times, the DDA has approved.
Beginning of December.
The first, normally the first Saturday in December, the DDA did approve the drone light show on a one-year basis to see how it turns out.
I think it's too much money for the minimal time that you have of that, you could, you could spend that money wiser somewhere else.
That's, you know, twelve minutes.
I think we need to go for it.
No way, no way.
I just.
We need to try, that's, it's a one-year time. We need to try, that's it's a one-year contract.
How long is the blast?
Twelve to fifteen minutes.
There you go.
Ah.
If they're willing, if they're willing to open their purse strings and invest, why not? If it does, if it's a bust, don't do it again.
That's why we only signed the one-year contract. We could've got a discount for committing to three years, but that's.
Then it depends on the weather too, correct? If it's windy or raining.
Yeah, but they said they'd come back.
Is it gonna bring enough people in here to justify spending the money?
That's what, that's what the question is on the table, and that's what they're trying to find the answers to.
I think we ought to give it a turn.
So, they're looking for a date set so that they can start making plans.
So, it's a.
December seventh.
They got six.
First Saturday?
First Saturday is the seventh.
What time did we start last year?
Great question.
The whole event, or just the show at the end?
The parade.
I did, I think everything started around four thirty or something, but the parade was.
They were gonna.
Shorten up the time between the parade and after, so, I think we're gonna move the parade earlier to five thirty.
Are you looking for a date right now?
Correct, I, a hundred percent, just a date, just a date right now.
Is this the date?
December seventh.
That seems like a really good time, uh, first week, December, like at the very end of that, that's kind of like perfect.
When you go in a week later than that, you're starting to get into people's families.
Go on, get together, still shopping, and all the thing, yeah.
Is this the same company that America's got, Taylor?
Not from the spark. You will, you will, Green might, might need to get to a bar, I'll be fine. I worried about it one year, and now you have to get flack for it. I'll make a motion to set the date for December seventh, Saturday, December seventh.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
December seventh, nineteen forty-one.
Oh, gosh.
Item D, Village Signs, discussion.
DDA is looking to modernize and revamp the branding of the town. I was hoping that Kelly would be here, but her and Victoria have this idea of fixing or changing, uh, the signs as you enter into the village. Obviously, they cannot do that, they'd be willing to pay for it without your blessing. Um, right now, they are kind of stuck on a cedar sign with black. Um, this is just one example on the backside.
No, absolutely not.
This is a conversation they'd like to have going forward as they look to, you know, like you look at the pots uptown and how beautiful people are starting to save, you know, the. The towers painted, they're, they're like, now's the time to, let's invest and bring people here, show them that we're serious about our businesses. Show them that we're serious about spending money and, and making it a, an economic development tool. For, to attract people and businesses to town, so. This is a conversation they'd like to begin, I just wanted to make you aware of it.
They're the business owners.
You know, what, what, what's the town really known for here? Coal mine, duck on mainly, you know, and just like our logo on the, I mean, if you could have something solid, bigger, would be great. Uh, but.
Well, it was lumber era before the coal mines.
I'm just saying, we're going for the duck, we're the gateway to the Shiloh City Flats.
I, I'm trying to find it.
Okay.
But to have a nice sign, you look at some of these places where they've got, the, the signs coming into town, and they got a nice landscape in there, I mean, it, it really. It's really nice, but just, and again.
Could be a lot of money.
It's undecent, and you're talking big bucks.
And they're willing to front it.
They're willing to front it.
They're willing to what?
They're willing to give it the money.
Oh, I thought they're, they're willing to fund it, I'm like, oh, I'm.
Yeah, that, dude. That's the whole price.
Did they pay for it?
Yes.
Oh, hell, good, oh, hell, yeah.
Has anyone, has anyone seen the signs, the leaked limits signs in Berth Run?
Yes.
Those are really nice.
I know a guy that makes these signs though, they're really cool, and he pretty good, do anything he want, I don't know.
Those are the two that they.
That's better.
Those are the two that they started, wanted to start the conversation.
Looks like a doctor's office.
It does.
You come to get a burger, or you keep.
A little more rustic though.
I'll sign them.
Some of us sat away, come, so, you know, come into town, see in that, and just wanna turn around and.
Well, yeah, but I like the pillars, and I like the stump.
I do too.
But.
Well, we could change it.
They have money, they have grand ideas, they obviously understand the traditions, um, and they understand how delicate it is to change. Everybody wants change until it affects them, right?
Right.
I like that, over the first one.
So this is the conversation, that they're looking at everything.
So like, we could make the mill sign, the white part there, we can make that brown like the others, like the pillars?
We, we could do a lot of things.
I think they need to dig a little deeper and come up with some.
Come up with some better ideas.
Yeah, better ideas. I don't think that's acceptable for our community, but yeah, to start, no.
But there is a, there's a changing of the guard on the DDA, it's a little bit younger, and they're looking to do a little bit more. And they're, they don't love all, everything that's currently out there, kiosk, they could, they could do away with. There would be for property, more property to put up a new electric sign that actually works, and is slow enough where people can read it, right? Something maybe next to the barber shop where the school can utilize it as well for events, but they, they're.
We're at top of it, home of the ninety-nine state football champions.
Something like that.
What about like where the bike is out there, where the edge of town, oh, Sunview Woodline, like where the bikers, you could. Were you coming into town?
It's probably north of that, but.
Well, if you do it at the, the, next where Neil Zinko is, just take the golf course sign down and put it there.
They, they are gonna make an offer and see if it's for sale, and they're gonna expect the number.
Most places, I mean, it may not be one of our orders, but what I remember most places, their orders is if your business is out of business for. Over so many months, you have to take the sign. I don't know if we have that or not.
Not currently.
Where's seven hundred, it's gonna say, how's that?
Kimberly York is showing that, who owns that?
He passes the barber shop, right?
That's what he said, apparently, cause I.
But there's been plenty of offers on that, and he hasn't budge, but.
Is that the guy that owns the golf cart?
But I, I'm gonna give him a call now, do his number, if there is a number.
Yeah, Tommy's gonna be more proud, proud of it.
I won't, I won't negotiate that way, but.
I'm not sure if I like this one.
They just wanted me to bring it to you, so that we could start.
More, more ideas, more.
Yeah.
More ideas.
Something a little more.
There's a lot, I mean, it's.
You're right though, that now's the time, I mean, we, in a year and a half, we've done a lot. A lot of sprucing up, the water tower, the kayak launch, you know, talked about river cleanup a little bit.
Placades getting used.
I'm all for whether the DDA's gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't, don't say that free, free will, they'll, they'll take you up on it. I won't ask for your finger.
Well, I appreciate them asking, but.
Money there to, that, why set up?
Right, right.
This town's bleeding, we need to fix this, and we need to bring people here, bottom line. The river, the river interests me.
I mean, Victoria's place is beautiful, so, like, I totally get.
There's funds have redone most of downtown.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
There's only two buildings that really need, well, two and two that are gonna be worked on, two that really need it before the two that are gonna be rebuilt.
What is up with the, the vacant thing next to Tony's, do you hear anymore about that?
I haven't talked to him in, in weeks, I've done, you seen him around?
So you don't know anymore what's going on with the buildings?
Well, it's been a couple of weeks. Well, grand, grand plans again, but. No, that wasn't better than I expected, so I'm glad, that was the initial start there.
Department reports, DPW.
On the water side, we pumped four point seven million gallons, that's about a hundred fifty-three thousand gallons a day. We did update our living copper, copper sample plan through Eagle, and we'll be doing our testing here in June. The meters, we did have a class with Spicer for the GIS. I think Carter, we're gonna buy what, a iPad.
Couple iPads.
There's most of the informations in the GIS. And try to make, created, I guess, a more user friendly, so we're gonna try to start using that. You know, have an iPad in each one vehicle, uh, try to get away from the paper maps. Think it went pretty well, most of us are realizing that's the way it's gonna be, you know, get used to paper maps, but.
We'll still have the maps, and we can digitize it, type to them, archive them, and we'll put it all on a map, so you can literally hold the iPad, it shows you. Where the meter is, what line going in, what line, you know, different layers.
Yeah, and the old system, it was kind of hard, you had to get in, in like a, so.
It's like a Google Doc, which I hate Google Doc.
You had to go to an index, find what page, look, but the new one, you just scroll to a map and touch, touch it, and it basically brings up all the asphalt, so. Be more user friendly, and as we figure it out, we can actually put things in it.
We're trying to be as accurate into one to two feet accuracy, I mean, there is equipment we could buy to make it inside a foot, but it's rather expensive.
For what, we use one to two foot.
Do we get our kids in there to mow?
Not, no, not yet, no.
There are a couple of them that want to do it for money, I mean, we're gonna do it for free.
Yeah, the Ambassador Club, can do it for free, I just had to provide gloves, which I've offered, Spicer Gateless Gloves too.
On the sewer end, we pumped five point nine million gallons, that's about a hundred ninety-one thousand a day, we, uh. Finished our spring discharge for the lagoons, that's all set till fall. Uh, this routine mowing, and we did, on the Maple Street lift station, we did have to have, uh, city sewer cleaners come out and. Back out the wet well, there was a lot of grease and other debris floating in there, it was messing with the poles, so. It's working fine now, uh, streets, routine mowing, patching, brush pickup. Parks, we hope, a lot of materials for beautification day. As Paul mentioned, we did remove the play equipment at Lumberjack, uh, and. We've been watering trees and flowers, now we have forty-one, forty-one trees to water now, so. It's a job, but we, I think we lost one, it looks like, over the winter, so if that's under.
Lindsay's supposed to be back out to.
It's under warranty, so.
As long as we followed her rules, which we did.
League we have, I don't know why she did, well, her rules, but again, it's through the, the companies.
Oh, the club.
Two, two different vendors, but. So, then I, so. I think beautification day actually was one of the better ones, tries to clean up and.
Finally have a system that works.
They, they seem to be biting off less and getting more organized.
There's a lot of chiefs and a lot of opinions, so we found like a way that beforehand, we have a list of what needs to be done and where. And then we pregame it, knock it out, and then they can review and get back to us the morning of or the day before, so that we're prepared. And they know what's there, and they can just get to work, so. It's a good system right now with Lori, and Jay, and Doug, and Kelly. Lot of visits, weeks leading up.
We like running everything through Hart.
Thank you, guys.
Another half, the water project's kind of ramping up, I think also hydro seeding should be done today, and we're just starting going through all the. Friends to check all the valves, make sure nothing's got knocked out of whack through the cleanup, and a little punch list, and. Should pretty much be finishing up.
Oh, I know what I was gonna bring up, off Harvard, where you guys got the sidewalks coming down, where they meet the road, there's a gap.
Yeah, they got, they're coming back to asphalt.
I'm just saying, some kid went down there today, and it was dark, I know, every one of them streets, like Lake Street and that.
That went down.
Some kid's gonna eat it, or somebody's gonna trip on that, we're gonna be liable.
Throw some cones in there.
Call Rob, that's.
I mean, there's one cone on the whole road, that's it, it's like, really? I'm just saying, you could've thrown some sand or some dirt or something in there, cause somebody's gonna eat it.
Yeah, they just got done pouring the sidewalks, and I don't know, if they didn't think about that in the whole.
I mean, it's not just one road, there's several.
I'm sure not, not many would be upset with that. You good on that, Dan?
Again, questions, comments, concerns?
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Item B, Police Department vote.
So the one major one, we've already discussed about the, the new potential officer that we're gonna send to the academy. The quality over quantity for the traffic stops, it's kind of giving it out, it's seven stops with six tickets, so it's pretty even there. Uh, schedule, even though we're, we're, we're still at three, it's, we're still working on getting all the. Weekends covered, it's a little easier now in the summertime, cause Michelle's out of the school, so her schedule's gonna change a little bit more. She's gonna be covering, basically every night that Ethan's not on, so we'll have night shift covered almost everything. Um, there's some days where they're all three are gonna be on, it's just the way it's gonna be right now with the different schedules. So there'll be a, she'll work at, some days on Wednesday, she'll work at twelve to like eight, I think it is, so there'll be double coverage, but. Those three hours that she's here, when I'm here, I come in the office and take care of a lot of stuff, where I don't have to worry about outside stuff, she's doing it then. Her and Ethan get together, and they rode double just to, to not run in two cars in one small village for a couple hours, it's no point, so. They just doubled up for that little bit of time. Um, call wise, we had the one where, I'm sure you people know about the spray painting incident that we had. Uh, we ended up finding out the, the three juveniles that were responsible for it, and I sent the stuff to the prosecutor today on it. Uh, one, uh, the one uncle to one of them saw them buying it, and when he saw the post on Facebook, he called me up, said, ah. Just so you know, this is probably what happened, these are probably the ones that did it, so. Uh, we had one that came in and talked to us and admitted everything, and of course, a couple of the girls were saying no, but I want the prosecutor to figure that one out, so. But that one's been taken care of, um, nothing else really in terms of. The, uh, the breaking and entering is all roped up into that one spray painting incident, because they went through. The, uh, fenced off property at Paul's to get back to their property to spray paint them, so that's why there's that being parked on there. It's not like they broke into a building or anything, it's just because they entered the property without permission, is, that's what the title is for. Um, I got a call that the new truck is now being built. And then it's just a matter of when he gets notice of words being built, add to how long it's gonna take to ship, so, it'd be four to eight weeks max on that. I don't think there's any, wasn't any, we did four, I did four purchase permits this week, this month. Which I thought, it seemed like I did more than that, but I think the one guy came in a couple times, and he got multiples at once is why. Probably knows what I'm talking about, he comes in.
He comes like once a week?
Yes, it's quite often now, I don't even have to run it through me anymore, cause I just, well, I am here to stop.
If they have, if they have a concealed weapon permit, do they need that, or no?
Nope, no, that's what I, one of the first questions I always ask them, if they have a CPW, cause it's just a different process. They can actually go online and fill it out themselves with their CPW number, or CCW number, and just fill it out through the state's website, print it off themselves. They don't have to come in and get ran, cause they've already been ran with that CCW license. So just a lot easier, plus they don't gotta pay the fee for the notary. Um, yeah, I think that's about it, there's not, it's summertime now, so, look forward to seeing a lot of the kids running around, I think.
That's why the PSA is on the sign after school gets out, there's a lot of car doors that are left unlocked, and they get busted into, so we just throw it out there.
Mm-hmm, do you have any questions?
Good job, thank you.
Uh, Scott was here, he left about six o'clock, his mom fell, and was refusing, uh, an ambulance, and his dad. Stepdad could not lift her, so, he apologizes, but he'll be here next week for planning, if you have any questions?
Well, I got questions.
Okay.
I'm hearing from a lot of people, complaints about Scott and his attitude, and how he addresses some of these issues, I mean, there's some of this stuff on here though, I mean. Ah, it's a cute dudes, junk vehicle, there was like one, one vehicle, it was around West North Street, and then there's a big old. Camper right next to it, right in somebody's front yard, he didn't say nothing about that.
As you know, we are complaint based, so.
Yeah, that's the problem, it, it, it's an ordinance, an ordinance is an ordinance, it's a law within the village, and he doesn't, doesn't do it unless somebody wants. But I'm hearing he's being nasty to a lot of these people, and I think it's, it's to the point where he's being a. He's not an asset anymore, he's a liability, and I think eventually, we're gonna end up getting our butts handed to us, we end up going to court and getting sued. And I think eventually, we're gonna end up getting our butts handed to us, we end up going to court and getting sued, I think he needs to go. Man, that's all I hear, I don't hear not one good thing about him, not one. I haven't heard one good thing about him in the years that I've been, I don't know why you guys put up with it, but I would've got rid of him a long time ago. I mean, he does, he does nothing but harass these people in this town, it's just ridiculous. We could find somebody, Mike Banning or somebody, get somebody in there, cause that's just ridiculous, the stuff he does. And they did check off some of these, one of the tall grass, I mean, that's normal, and the one I seen, one hundred Hanchett Street, that don't make any sense, cause it's on the wrong side of the road. One twenty's right across the road, it should be like one oh one, it's on the odd side of the road, but the, the little pamphlets he's got there, it says one hundred, but it is for sale. Most of these are, in the one on Sunview, what is up with that? It's, it's in a, like an abandoned house down there? The grass is getting taller, it's, it's, it's like, I don't know, who the heck used to live there? I think that Niederstadt's also right around.
Right in the corner, isn't it?
Yeah, well, it's just, just like where the, the street crosses, the, what the hell road that is. Yeah, Bristol, that, that, just pass that on the left, from the park side.
Just west of Bristol and South.
White House, it's just, just kinda overgrown and don't look like anybody's lived there forever. I haven't been down there a long time.
About a couple of years.
But I mean, I don't.
Not Niederstadt, it's all straight.
No, I don't think it is, it's.
I think it is, I think.
That's all since two thousand and six.
Yeah, it's Niederstadt's house. Cause I thought, what are the odds that a Niederberg moving to Niederstadt, so that was kinda fun.
Definitely not Niederberg.
Joey Wilkins and his boys, they cut that grass.
What's with the chickens? Chickens.
Six thirty one West Bell?
Somebody in the West Valley area, chickens.
There's chickens over there.
You can tell by the turkey buzzers floating around and chickens, if someone's got them, they weren't here about a month ago.
We'll have to get McPhail on that one.
Well, you can hear them, I can hear them in the morning.
I know, I know how it works.
What's that?
I know how it works.
I know, I got six over there, making noise every morning.
Most of these that are on here are resolved, I mean, tall grass, that's, most of it I looked at, the grass is pretty much cut, it's still a little long, but it's not.
Most of it's a letter and then they call and say, hey, I broke my foot, or hey, my son's out of town, we'll get it next week, is that okay?
Yeah, but a lot of these aren't even saying it, it, it's, if they're not complying or resolved, maybe they did it afterward.
It's just record keeping, so we have notes, documentation.
Yeah, but I think this thing Scott really needs to be addressed, seriously.
Yep, I, I heard, I listened to a call today, I've been trying to help him with some of that attitude, the city stuff and.
It's probably the same call I got.
No, no, not a negative call.
About the building up here, Marnie's Pizza, the old Marnie's Pizza place, that was one of them.
Yep, yep, I went in and intervened on that one, but today he handled the call, uh, much better, so training is going positively. Because he, he forgets he's not in the city sometimes and, and I've let him know that.
Well, you know what, his, his dad grew up here, that's what's crazy.
No, he's not overloaded, he gets offended when, when people try to skirt the rules, they don't wanna follow the rules, they're not Scott's rules, they're state law. Scott's trying to protect the village from lawsuits.
Sounds like he's trying to add a lawsuit.
So he's just telling the facts and he's gotten better at, it's the state law, I'm protecting you, if something goes wrong, it's not the village, it's gonna get sued.
Well, when he's gotta have a body cam, think about it, there's no reason he should have to have a body cam.
The body cam wasn't for the village, it was for the municipality.
You know, he didn't need to do, go up there and just say, hey, your violation, blah, 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 have a nice day, come let you know what's going on. No, he's up there getting in their face, pulling their crap, he did it to me, so, I know firsthand how Scott's attitude is, Scott needs to go. I got nothing more to say about that, that's it.
Here we go. Public comment?
Go ahead. Thank you, uh, my name is Paul Young, I'm here to, uh, make an introduction and share a little bit of news, uh, in case some of you maybe don't watch television, I know the ads are already gone. But, uh, as I said, my name is Paul Young, I live in Grand Blank Township in Genesee County, which might typically say, well, what do you heck, what the heck are you doing up here in Saginaw County? I'm running for Congress, uh, I am the Republican who ran against Dan Killey, uh, last election cycle, uh, a vigorous campaign, but I did come up a little bit short. This is Michigan's eighth district, it is all of Genesee County, all of Saginaw County, all of Bay County and most of Midland County. Uh, and just six months ago, Dan Killey announced that, uh, he will not be running for reelection, he's going to retire, so. Uh, I fully expect to be the Republican, uh, on the ballot, uh, if any of you will be voting in the Republican primary in August sixth, I would ask for your vote. And the Democrats have three or two, three candidates, and so we'll see who the Democrats put forward. Uh, just a little introduction about me, uh, my two brothers and I, all three of us were born in Ann Arbor, Michigan, so, you know, I heard the Spartan Wolverine, I am, go blue. But, uh, my, my parents both grew up in Jackson, Michigan, I, my mother was a school teacher, my dad worked in the auto industry. He did eventually start a business maintaining military family housing. So, uh, the homes that our service personnel and their families lived in, we took care of those houses, the plumbing, the painting, the cleaning, the grounds work, that type of thing. Uh, and that work did take us to Army, Navy and Air Force bases all across the country. I worked in the family business, a little bit more about my personal background, uh, professional background. Uh, I, I'm, I am an attorney, I was at one time a county prosecutor, so I always wanna make sure I say the law enforcement, I understand your work and I absolutely support what you do. Uh, I, I prosecuted a number of cases, I particularly worked in a domestic violence unit. Uh, also, the professional experience I had that's particularly pertinent to this is, uh, I did work on Capitol Hill. I was an investigative counsel to Senator Chuck Grassley, uh, and I also worked in the Trump administration, I worked in the Department of Homeland Security, uh, working on border and immigration issues. So I think that's some of the professional background I would bring to this, uh, position, should I be successful? And, and I might just conclude, uh, and, uh, happy to take any questions if the format permits that, but just conclude by saying that, again, should I be successful? I, I hope to be an effective voice for you in Washington DC, and I know, uh, a part of that is, is all of the elected officials here in this room. You know, and I can tell, uh, by listening to the particulars of, of, uh, you know, the code enforcement and you, you know this community, you know the people who live in this community. And I'm just meeting you here tonight, I think most of you, but I would hope and I'm gonna make sure I give each of you my business card with my personal cellphone. I, I'd hope to develop a, a relationship with you so that when you know issues that, that are going on, that you wanna see an effective voice in Washington, that I can be that voice for you, so. Uh, thank you for, I, I genuinely appreciate that you were willing to move me up, but I, I find I learn things if I sit and listen for a little while, and so I, I appreciate that. Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, to say hello tonight, thank you.
I got a question.
This is public comment.
Oh, you want, okay, well, is it my turn then?
Yes.
Be a person to call us back if we call that number?
I'll probably answer. Until I get elected then. Thank you. Thank you.
One question for, uh, Paul, uh, do you have any endorsements?
I do, uh, Tim Wahlberg is the senior, uh, Republican Congressman here in Michigan, he's endorsed me, Jim Jordan has endorsed me. And here in Saginaw County, all five of the county commissioners that are Republican have endorsed me, those are just some.
Anything higher up in the, uh, electoral?
Donald Trump has endorsed me in the past, he hasn't made an endorsement yet, but, uh, I'm working on it.
My name's Mark Westlock, um, basically, um, my understanding is that we had some vandalism, uh, on the rail trail this, uh, last month. And I'm here to ask, uh, for a little more detail, I think we covered.
Talking about, we caught him.
Yes, uh, basically, you know, there's a lot of rumors going on and I'm talking not only for myself, but, you know, users of the rail trail and my neighborhood. Basically wanna know, you know, some names and if there was any punishment.
Juvenile, I can't get them out.
Was there a police report?
Yeah, I just said it was sent to the prosecutor's office.
Isn't that a public record then?
They're juveniles.
Yeah, but isn't it?
Once it's, you, once it's been prosecuted, yes, but not until it's prosecuted, juvenile.
My second question was then, is it, was there a punishment or is it gonna be a punishment?
It's about to the prosecutor, the prosecutor's office.
Okay, so is that at the prosecutor's office?
Yeah, I just sent it today.
Okay, that's answered that question, uh, another, another question is, is, uh, as you know, that, um, you know, my neighborhood asked for, uh, police, um, uh, walking up and down the rail trail. Uh, on the weekend, fifteen minutes, would this have helped mitigate some of this problem?
That was right after school during the day when that happened.
Okay. Are, are we going to get, you know, a, uh, weekend patrol of the?
Depends on our man hours that we have right now, you know.
We're asking for fifteen minutes, you know.
Mister Westlock, I, I got a, someplace you probably, call the Parks and Rec people, he's down there every day cleaning out the crappers and whatever, you call them and ask them.
We have this discussion, they, they don't, they don't wanna get involved, they don't wanna get involved in police work.
It's not police work, just, just kind of, I don't know, a visual of the trail, they need to.
I think they got Park Rangers for that too.
Well, I'm wondering, they got somebody that actually can, can drive them down to maintain it once a weekend?
Well, the Park Rangers are not law enforcement and we've had this discussion with, uh, Saginaw County. You know, basically what we're asking for is because of the vandalism in the village of St. Charles, uh, we're getting a reputation, uh, according to, um, you know, the people that use the rail trail. That the vandalism seems to be centered here in St. Charles.
You act like this is the first time we've ever had vandalism in this town, come on, this is every year.
I know, that, that's what I'm saying.
Every year.
Every year we got vandalized.
It's not just here, it's every time.
We're not every time, you know, I'm a taxpayer of this town and that's what, uh, you know, I'm suggesting is that we basically have someone walk on that trail. Show a present, a police, uh, presence at least fifteen minutes once a weekend for, you know, the duration of the summer.
And you think that's gonna solve everything?
Well, you know what? It can hurt.
I think with Officer DM being in the school system, I think during the school, I think that helps a lot with the kids.
Yes, you're exactly right. And I praised her for her efforts and I think that's a good start, but then, you know, the school's out, you know, having someone walk on the rail trail. Uh, presence, you know, will help, uh, eliminate, I think, some of the, you know, things that we're seeing.
There's people that walk on that every day, it'd be nice to get them, get somebody, I don't know how to put it, that could actually patrol it, that, you know who's gonna be down there. Some of these people are down there at a certain time every day, they get out of work, they go down there, ride their bike, take their walk.
The Park and Rec, they, they don't have enforcement, uh, you know, abilities, you know, they're there to maintain the, uh, you know, the rail trail. What we're, what I'm asking for is somebody to have, show a presence, um, you know, that has law enforcement, uh, abilities. You know, we do have a vandalized house at the east end of North Street, um.
Bishanix.
Pardon me?
Bishanix, right?
Yeah, Bishanix, yeah, right, and, you know, and again, if there's a mile within the village, it can't hurt. You know, fifteen minutes once a weekend, twice a weekend, whatever it is, uh, it seems like a reasonable request, especially since we've had this vandalism, uh, you know.
You wanna do it on a bike, get them a bike to ride up and down every once in a while?
Well, we talked about that.
I have a bike.
We, we got a bike, you gotta take a class or course in order to do it, it's like six hundred dollars.
Got a bike?
Well, no, police bike rating.
It's like three hundred to six hundred dollars, did you ever find out what?
I don't know what kind of law it is.
Did you ever find out what the cost was to fly the drones?
No, they, they got back to me, they're, they're working on getting, uh, getting courses back again, but it'd be the deltas would be the consortium, so we'd either get discount or be free.
Yeah.
I never got to see the drone, is that thing okay?
It looks sweet, we plugged it in and charged it with.
Never figured it out?
Now we have to get a license to use it.
What?
Yeah, you gotta have some co- aviator thing or something like that.
What did it come with, did it come with a bunch of junk?
There's no directions, I can tell you that much. Bunch of batteries and a.
I figured it out on my own, geekier than I am.
This thing is huge. This isn't your normal drone.
It's like a Joe Montana crash.
Uh, because what the, the, what they're talking about using it for, like, um, for DPW or anything, you want up on top and taking aerial photos, you gotta have a license in order to take aerial photos of you. Just a flyer drone is whatever, now if that person gets caught taking photos of people, they can get in trouble. You gotta have a license in order to.
Wow, I didn't know that.
For sure.
Isn't my, isn't my understanding, the village does not think it's a good idea to have the police walk fifteen minutes once a weekend, uh, once, uh, a weekend?
That's a, that's a thought right there, if you get with them, they maybe do the drone thing, I'm serious.
I don't think it'll do, do anything, to be honest.
Just an idea, throw some, throw some ideas out there, little bike, little drone, get with some of these people that walk every day regularly.
We got police presence in town. I don't, I don't, I just don't see it.
All right, I will, I will get back to my neighborhood and tell them that, uh, the council isn't interested.
Oh, no, don't tell them that, somebody's not interested, I'm interested.
Okay, that, I'm, you know, that's what I say.
Say you need to come up with some ideas, like we cut this through a couple A, whatever you think is best, though.
Well, the idea, fifteen minute walk, once a weekend, just have a police, uh, presence on the rail trail, that's the idea.
I think most of these kids are gonna do this stuff at night though, they're not gonna do it in the broad daylight.
They did the.
It's what the girls did.
Broad daylight, young girls, spray paint, not much damage to the village, but the damage they did to the county is gonna be expensive.
Wow.
They do it right on the path?
What would it?
No, that's a county, that's a county, this is a county trail.
Couple thousand.
That's the issue, it's a county.
It's a county trail.
We can't have village PD patrolling a county trail.
Without a class.
Within, within the village, it's part of the village, they just have, they have an easement, you know, their easement is, uh, fifty feet from the center line of the trail and east side of the trail. But that's an easement, it's our property.
Easement from the.
Uh, we talked, I talked to Hart about that and we're still questioning, you know, what part of the property, who owns what, but.
The county didn't get back to me, I just closed my computer, but as far as that property that you're in front of, Bolt Works that you were referencing?
Yeah.
It's theirs.
Okay. Um, you know, that's the idea, um, you know, we've had, uh, vandalism in the bathroom, uh, at the trailhead, uh, a few years ago, there was a fire there. Uh, there's a sign, uh, it's a wildlife sign by Beaver Creek, uh, that's been defaced, so.
Well, maybe, invest in a camera down there.
My concern about the fifteen minutes is most vandalism, I would think, is kind of a spontaneous thing. I mean, that's gonna be planned and purposeful, I guess, but, I mean, I, fifteen minutes here is not gonna, I, in my opinion, going to deter it or improve it much. I think I like the idea of having another idea, I feel bad for the plate, cause you guys live right there, but I don't think the fifteen minutes of law enforcement on that trail is gonna help with the vandalism.
As I say, I, I brought the idea, you know, not as, as an individual, as a neighborhood talking to my neighbors and they did like the idea of the fifteen minute walk, uh, you know, on the trail. We used to have it, you know, back in the day when, uh, they were riding a bike, uh, there was a police presence on the trail, but, um, anyway.
Short-lived.
It, it seems like, you know, for the police protection, the fifteen minutes is not an unreasonable request. And if, uh, the village council did not agree, then I'll just go back to my neighborhood and tell them.
How much actual damage has been done in the last year?
Well, that's, you know, there's considerable amount of damage, uh, to the point where they had to, um, get a quote to do the repairs, now, you know.
They just used some type of, um, liquid to take the spray paint, uh, some tape, spray paint remover is what they use, is what it's on estimate.
But how many incidents?
Majority of the cost is the labor, that's what they charge them for.
How many incidents has there actually been, say, in a year?
Um, the bathroom at the trailhead by lumberjack has been twice. And the, one of the times of the bathroom was related to this most recent one, along with the, the trailhead, they got a bench and a man locker sign.
And there's, and there's a wildlife sign on Beaver Creek that's been defaced too.
I didn't get reported about that, they just told me about a bench in the, um, man locker sign.
This was years ago, but, but the, the facing is still there.
If this is.
The presence of a camera, whether it works or not, to have it there, people don't know whether it works or not, we'll detour them from.
Well, we did, you know, you know, back, uh, you know, I'd say, uh, ten years ago, when Hal Needham's here, uh, they were gonna put, um, surveillance cameras on, um, the Honda House.
They're there, they're there.
Are they, are they running? Because basically, when, when we had some, when, when we had some vandalism, they told us that, uh, it wasn't, you know, the cameras weren't running.
No, they weren't, cause I tried it when they destroyed, when they vandalized the bathroom the first time, I inquired about the cameras and I was informed that they don't work.
Yeah.
They're there for just like a scare tactic.
Yeah, but they, they don't, they don't work.
I mean, we saw lots of vandalism in the parking.
Those that don't work. Well, everybody knows they don't work.
On the record, on, on.
Anyway, uh, that's my, um, my request.
Thank you for your concern.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, did you want to ask if there's anyone else on the scene?
Oh, any other public comment?
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Support.
All's in favor? All in favor? Disapprove?